Let's call our Finance Committee to order. Today is August 8th. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
I make a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes of August 1st, 2016, as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda and the minutes. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The pass. Under travel requests, I believe we have six items. So you want to take that?
I'll make the motion for the travel request. Dana Jackson, Housing Maintenance for Class N A H R O U P C S, R E C, R E C Training in West Des Moines, Iowa, September 27th, amount not to exceed $205. Police Officers Yates and Cap, Class Training, Crime Scene School, destination is in Raymond, September 19th through the 23rd, amount not to exceed $500. Motion for Officers Richard, Hugh.
Hillshire.
Hillshire, McClellan, Erie, Michael Gersh, Rule Paul, and Brom. Atesta, Ten of Class on Glock Armor Recertification in Grinnell, cost not to exceed $1,750. Jacob Frederick, Fitness Specialist, Class with Saw Waste or S W C Fitness Seminar Midwest, destination is Rosemont, Illinois, September 29th, amount not to exceed $1,162.32. Jeff Seibel, Property Safety Inspector, Fire Prevention and Building Safety Education Conference in Ankeny, Iowa, November 1 through the 4th, amount not to exceed $950. Greg Allhelm, Plans Examiner, Fire Prevention Building Safety Education Conference in Ankeny, Iowa as well, dates 1 through November 1st through the 4th, amount not to exceed $950.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the items under travel requests. Any questions on those or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
While those motions pass. Pre-oths.
Pre-oths today, we have Central Garage just purchased spring shackles and associated hardware, amount of $4,517.88. Also to purchase a mag drill and cutter kit, an amount of $1,552.06. Sewer Department to spend $25,741.35 plus $800 shipping handling to purchase a replacement pump and parts for the number two digester sludge transfer pump, number four T A S pump and number one T A S pump. Also to spend $2,591.95 plus $75 shipping and handling to purchase a replacement digester sump pump. And also for the sewer department, $1,816.50 plus $200 shipping handling to purchase a gas clip for gas monitor, three of those for a confined space entry.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the pre-oths. Any questions or discussion, any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those items pass. Today, we don't have any Budget Light Item Amendments, but we do have the bills to pay. And the bills this week are $3,861,971.45. That's 3,861,971.45.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the bills payment. Any questions there? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bills are paid.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion, a second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Learning these skills has given us tools that can help us to pursue career opportunities in the future. It has been a pleasure and honor working for the YES program. Some of the things we learned this summer, circles of support, we learned how to do career paths, dream paths, event planning, we learned how to write grants for an event we're having, the Safety Black Party at the Jesse Cosby Center. We would like to invite you, it's August 8th, that Friday.
Okay.
Good job, good job.
Other things we learned at the Jesse Cosby Center is etiquette class. We learned formation, which is how to sit, how to stand, and how to walk, public speaking, how to walk upstairs, how to set tables, and proper table manners. Gardening, we helped plant vegetables, we weeded and harvested vegetables from the community garden. Home-delivered meals, we helped to provide new meals for the sick and shut-in five days per week. The newsletter, we helped to write articles for the Jesse Cosby Center Monthly Newsletter. Sewing class, we learned how to make a pot holder for cooking. And financial literacy, we learned how to manage our money, how to open a checking or savings account. We learned about credit and debit cards and fee for withdrawals. We also learned the difference between needs and wants.
My name is Marta Vias and I've been working with the YES program for like two years now. And basically, we have been learning a lot of new opportunities with this program. I've been working with NextGen Climate, who basically we've been working with, to work with a lot of clean energy and things like that. And basically with Jesse Cosby Center, they have given me an opportunity to have a job or something, go work around, and be able to actually have an opportunity for later years when I actually want a real job. And I'd like to thank this community and all of us for giving us this job.
My name is Tavias, and it's my first year working with the YES program, and I worked a few years ago. We harvest vegetables from two different farms and then we sell them in the community where vegetables and fruits is not a really big thing for on that. And teach them new things to try new stuff.
Hi, my name is Shakaya, and I also work with NextGen. What I learned from the program this year, I really, I'm shy, you can't tell. It helped me gain more people skills, so like now I'm not trying to speak for as many people. We did a lot of like calling people over the phone, and I usually like, like we get hung up on sometimes, and if like, if I was at home doing it, I'd probably call back. No, we don't do that. I really appreciate my grandma for coming up with the idea to have a YES program because I know there's a lot of kids like me that usually just sit at home on my phone, bored, or you know, there's others that choose to do bad things, and this is just an alternative to that, so thank you.
Thank you.
My name is LeVanz, and I work at the Food Bank, and it's not a bad place to work, actually. It's a, we learn how to get ready for other moments and stuff, and like how to get along with other people, and we learn how to like stock stuff, and we just learn how to just be meeting people every day and...
I just want to add that he was a, a real good worker for the Food Bank, we're really proud of him, he did, he worked really hard, and he just got very used.
And just so we don't leave anybody out, we don't have any time short, but we do have another group here from St. Vincent, and I don't think that they even want to say anything much. But we did have another group that was about that work at St. Vincent.
Okay, so just a collection of working with people, working with the community, working with the Food Bank, St. Vincent de Paul, Jesse Cosby Center, and you know, we're all about partnerships, so it's great to see so many entities being involved in such a wonderful program that's teaching young people the skills that they need to be successful in the long run. So the council, I know I'm sharing with them is that we applaud your efforts as well. I see you have baskets though.
Yep, it's a little gift from Greens to Go, so if you guys want to come up and hand these out. There's only seven baskets, so I know you guys don't buy a lot, but just show these politely.
All right. I was missing her, I said it was only seven, but I see it was eight, so we're going to present the mayor with our t-shirt.
All right, as long as it's two dollars and ninety-nine cents. All right, thank you very much. Can we get him a round of applause? Fruits of our labors, or is it the vegetables of our labor? Also, this is the time in the meeting, if you can, if, when you take a picture outside, if you can forward it to us, that would be, that would be great to have. So thank you very much, good presentation. Now, those that are here, you're more than welcome to take off unless you want to get a lesson in civics this afternoon. So if you want to...
Apparently not.
Next.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's items one A through two B, and within that are our bills payment this week, the bills payment is three million eight hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-five cents. That's three comma eight six one comma nine seven one point four five.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Any questions, council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
All right, those items carried. Number two in public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the construction of single-family infill housing in the 1,000 block of Lafayette Street.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor? Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item or have questions or concerns? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion and to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. All in favor? Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Motion made with the second. Any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Looking it over, I was trying to find the square footage of the house, I could not find that. Does anyone know what that is?
Mr. Jones.
Rudy Jones, Community Development Director. It's approximately about fourteen hundred square feet at this point in time. We might have to scale it back some, but it's still going to be between one hundred and, one thousand four hundred, fifteen hundred square feet.
Secondly, are the homes in that area selling for roughly eight hundred and eighty thousand?
The appraisal of some of the homes we've sold range from about one fifteen, one twenty, one twenty-five, so even though we're going to build it for one hundred and seventy-eight, we'll have to sell it at whatever it appraises at. So we'll build it and sell it for whatever that appraisal will come in. We're thinking it's going to continue to move higher than the most recent ones we've sold, because we're starting to get some units in there that will allow for the comps to increase that appraisal price.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? And I think this is a continuation of the work that's been done in that area, East Eighth Street, we've seen new homes, probably in an area that hasn't seen new homes in probably sixty years or so, so great work in moving forward in that area. But any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobes.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to your development director for review.
Second.
Motion made with the second. All in favor? Opposed?
All right, there was one bid. The bid was from Connolly Construction, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. The bid security was in the form of a check for eight thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents, and the bid amount was one hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, one seven eight comma nine six seven point zero zero.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, could I just ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones, did we, I assume we sent out bids to local builders? I'm just curious, only one response, and it was a Cedar Rapids builder.
Yes, again Rudy Jones, Community Development Director. We sent specific invitations out to all of our local vendors, and being that Mr. Connolly has worked with us in the past, we also advertised. We've gotten away from some of our smaller infill construction projects of late, and we probably will go back and find out some of the reasons why we didn't get any more than just one bid.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding pre-construction contract to Connolly Construction, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in conjunction with construction of single-family infill housing in the 1,000 block of Lafayette Street in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and authorize mayor to execute said agreement.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Item carries. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on a request by CASCO, C-A-S-C-O Corporation, for a site plan amendment to the R-4, R-P, Plan Multiple Residents District to allow for the construction of a six thousand four hundred and thirty-six square foot medical clinic and a thirty stall parking lot located directly to the east of forty fifteen Hurst Drive.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor? Opposed? The hearing is now closed. All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
All right, thank you, congratulations, you're moving forward, thank you. Could someone take resolutions? Let's go four and five.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the development agreement with M and K Quality Electric for the development of a three thousand square foot commercial building for an electrical company with a value no less than two hundred and ten thousand dollars, offering property tax rebates for one year through year four, seventy percent, year five through year seven, for sixty-five percent, and authorize mayor to execute said agreement. Number five is a resolution approving pre-construction agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for primary road improvements in conjunction with two thousand and sixteen Highway two eighteen asphalt resurfacing project from Williston Avenue to West Eighteenth Street to West Sixth Street, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made. Is there anyone in the audience or council, do you have any questions about these two items?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The question I had, I had a call today with some concerns about item number four, and I don't know if anybody from M and K Quality Electric is here, but the question
Do we have a representative here? Noel, do we know that information yet?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We're not aware of that information. However, that would normally be something that would be addressed in the building permit process, so as a part of their review by the planning, engineering, fire, and building departments, that would be ascertained as to who their contractor was and the subcontractors being able to do the, the work appropriate to the codes.
If we're, if they're qualified, do we tell them who they can do their electrical work with?
They would definitely have to have someone in submitting the plans for the electrical work that would have the qualifications to sign those plans.
Okay.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor and Noel, what I was informed of was that whoever does the work will have to hold an electrical Class A master's license, for sure, in order to follow through with the work on a commercial building. Just wanted to ensure that that was properly done.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could we maybe just have a little overview, whatever knowledge we have about item number five? I'm curious about that versus, you know, the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago about asphalt and University Avenue. So is the DOT doing an asphalt resurface on two eighteen?
Eric.
Eric Thorstein. This is a continuation of the project that started this year, so they'll be doing overlay on that from about Eighteenth Street to about Sixth, and then these are the costs that the city bears as it be, because it's in an urban area and we're responsible for curb repairs and some storm sort of thing.
Good, thanks.
All right, any other questions about four and five? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
All right, those items carried. Number six and sevens, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number six, a resolution approving professional service agreement with Wayne Claus and Engineering and Surveying, Inc. of Water, Ohio, in the amount not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for construction-related services for the Northwest Interceptor Sewer Extension, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number seven is a resolution approving construction plans for sanitary sewer and paving serving the Village West subdivision as submitted by Clapp Saddle Garber Associates, Inc., and sewage treatment agreement DNR Form 28A, September 2010, with the Department of National Resources, and the final acceptance of construction plans subject to the review and acceptance by the DNR, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
All right, motion's been made. Counsel, any questions about these items? Any questions from the audience? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
All right, those items carry. Eight and nine, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number eight is a resolution approving installation of a twenty-five mile an hour speed bump, speed hump, in the two hundred block of West Orange Road, and item number nine is adopting a resolution approving a temporary no parking this side sign on the east side of four hundred, of the four hundred block of Columbia Street for up to two weeks, beginning the week of August eighth, two thousand and sixteen, due to CenturyLink replacing underground utility service.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the second. Any questions about these two items?
Mr. Mayor, just to make sure it's read correctly into the record is, I know Councilman Schmidt just misread that it's rather than the two hundred, it's the three hundred block of West Orange Road.
Okay. Do we know that? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
All right, items carried. It's oral presentation times. Your opportunity to address the council on non-agenda related items. Please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Jim Jam, two-two-four Birch. First of all, Mayor, your microphone up there doesn't work all night. You've kind of heard what the kids were saying, so. But there's rumors going around that we are going to switch Fourth and Fifth Street back to a two-way, and if we are, what is the reason for that? Are we doing it because some other city's doing it, or do we find some more grant money?
Well, we know what they say about rumors.
Yeah, I know. There's a lot of rumors.
Sandy, correct me if I'm wrong, but are we currently, I think that was a newspaper article, but have you made any plans to change Fourth and Fifth yet? So it's a rumor.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I didn't get my question answered yet, though.
You did, you, excuse me?
My question didn't get answered yet.
What question?
About the Jewish streets and the grant.
About the Jewish streets and about the ability to change the, the grant that I brought up last week.
Oh, that question.
Yes, that question.
That question.
Forest, seventy, twenty-five Huntington Road. With school about to start, Downing Avenue just recently got tore out. I think in the future, we need to look at schools and construction in school zones. It looks like it's going to be some time before they can get to the school without going down to Huntington and all the way around the loop. Just in, you know, try and get the timing so that the streets are done before the, before school starts. Just think it'd be better. Thank you.
I think that's an excellent point. Sandy, to Mr. Morrissey's question.
Sandy Greco, Superintendent Traffic. Our traffic engineer did contact the DOT, and we cannot use, whatever, whatever grant we got awarded has to be used for that project, so we cannot transfer it to another project. If we don't use it, we return it.
Could I, is it okay to ask Sandy? Sandy, what my question would be, would, it still would be the same project, but it would just change. The, the design within the project would change.
Okay, we still can't do that because when we went after the grant, we used the study and what we're going after for, which was traffic improvements on the one-way streets.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
It's an absolutely different project, but, all right. Any other questions?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I'm Mr. Bruce Dubic, five hundred Sycamore Street, Waterloo. I'm complaining tonight because of, I've been trying for the last three years to get on the boards to help improve the accessibility of Waterloo area proper, and just recently, the last week or so, replaced the sidewalk in front of the five oh one Sycamore Building, right across the street from my apartment building. Basically, I hate to criticize anybody, but it looks like a bunch of fifth kindergartners did it. I mean, it's really pretty poor, stepped backwards, and I don't know who to, to ask this question to anymore because they're changing, and I would keep barking up the wrong tree, I guess, because I keep volunteering to be advisor, critic of the plans, the development, but it seems like a boost in the wrong direction. The placement curb, it says curb cut is worse than what it was before. Thank you.
All right, Bruce, are you currently on a city board?
I'm on the day-to-day compliance commission.
Because it's, it's, it's one board at a time for, for citizens, but you said that the curb on Sycamore Street in front of the?
Five oh one Sycamore Building.
Five oh one Sycamore Building.
It's on the, on the intersection, it's the northeast corner.
Okay. Let me, um, let us take a look at it. We'll get somebody to take a look at it and see what's going on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I wanted to just bring up two things very shortly, very short period of time. One of the things is that I get a lot of calls, I mean, quite a few calls regarding code enforcement alleged violations, and I know we have a, a pretty thick book of code ordinances which code enforcement is expected to deal with, and I, at one, when I first got on here, we had four code enforcement officers, and then it, I think it dwindled down to three, and there was a, a fourth that was a temp, and then that person was gone, and now we're down to three, and then one of the code enforcement officers does military duty, and so he has to go every now and then, and so sometimes that puts us at two. But I, I just had talked to City Attorney Zalifer, who heads this up, and, and he had said that there was a hope for getting this fourth code enforcement officer back, but it sounds like somehow it, it was lost in the budget someplace. I don't know what happened, but they're definitely, I mean, with the amount of work that these people have to do, I would hope that strong consideration would be made to get that fourth code, fourth code enforcement officer on, on staff as soon as possible. And the other thing that I wanted to bring up was something that was encouraging and, and very short, but it got sent to me by Dick County and his wife, and it, I'll just read this real quickly. Last Friday, a tree limb fell on our house, and this was sent to me on July twenty-eighth. The tree is located in city right-of-way, so on Monday morning, my wife called Leisure Services. By the time I got home from work, the limb was gone and the area cleaned up. This is an example of several positive interactions we've had with various city departments over the past couple of years. Last year, we upgraded our garage and driveway. The building and